Hi Skylar.
Hello.
And you needn't feel that you have to get both done tonight, but if you can get at your earliest.
It's kind of loose with the work and management expertise of managed children.
That's no small feat, let me tell you.
But do you keep them on?
That's right.
They're all alive, okay.
Jamie, a quick text about she's gonna join us, but she heard something.
Maybe she's having a day like myself. Did Johann?
Right.
He was your, he was yours.
He had a, had to fill in for Mayor Chief Dan on an important meeting with the county tonight, so, and couldn't get a substitute, so.
Well, he couldn't, he, that doesn't mean he doesn't have, that doesn't mean he has to be withdrawn, is that what I'm saying?
Well, only in the sense that, um, at, at this point in time, and, and Mayor spoke with him as well, at this point in time, given his, the amount of time that requires his commitments to both the O F D and O F R.
He's busy.
Yeah, well, and because these are days.
Like, in that, in that regard, I shouldn't be on it either, because I certainly have.
But as the mayor pointed out too, you know, that this first round of seats is gonna be staggered, so.
Sure, sure, sure.
So it won't, you know, keep needing wait another six years to again try.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started, it's a special city council meeting, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. And, uh, first of all, we'll do a roll call.
Mayor Ankorst.
Here.
Councilor Bergner.
Here.
Councilor Phillips.
Here.
Councilor Richards.
Here.
Councilor Kraus.
Yeah, I, I called the, and, and.
And he said he was calling in. Uh, so with that, I make a motion, we improve the agenda.
Second.
I actually don't have.
The second questions or amendments, a very straightforward agenda tonight.
I don't need it, it's fine, Renee.
Oh, yeah, it's just a blank one, yeah. It won't have the attachment.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Root, okay. Well, thank you for coming tonight, uh, this is a, um, meeting that we like to have, it's a very informal meeting, but we do have, um, some questions that we'll be asking. But, um, so, uh, we've all, let me just read this, what we have here, the city is thrilled to have gathered applications for candidates expressing interest in serving on the newly established Orinoco E D A board. The applications are listed in alphabetical order by first name only for the purpose of establishing a list, uh, for council reference on the agenda and for no other purpose. Applications for each of the applicants are included in the agenda packet provided to the mayor and council members tonight. Candidate information may not be distributed to the public until the mayor with council supports, support makes amendment, appointments of members of the E D A board, which is expected to occur by resolution at the March twenty-first regular city council meeting. So with that, um, what I'd like to do is we've alphabetically have you on seats. Um, so if you would just take a minute and give a quick, one minute, and we've all had the opportunity to read all the applications, so we don't need to review any of that in detail, so what we'd like to do is just up to a minute, just give a brief introduction of your interests, why you're here, anything you'd like to share with us, and we'll start with Adam.
Sure, yeah, um. Just, did you just want to know the interest, why we're here more so than the background or a little background?
Background too.
Yeah, sure, sure, um, um, from Rochester originally, um, forty-two years old, I've been a real estate agent for eighteen years, uh, almost exclusively residential side. Um, our family came to Orinoco because of the school districts, uh, initially, and we bought a lot in the River Park subdivision, maybe eight years ago, and built about four years ago. And, um, I think I'm largely interested in, in, um, volunteering here in part because I like this community a lot, I've been advocating already in my, in my business, and, uh, I'm largely just interested in learning, and I know, you know, uh, I'm not, not an expert at a lot of things that are on our lists here, uh, but I'm interested in learning, and I find with, uh, past experience and, and, you know, board leadership for the Realtor Association and things, that, uh, sometimes asking questions is a real good quality, and, and I think that's what I come with, probably more, more questions than answers. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, uh, Jan Bronson, um, I've lived in the area all my life, I have, uh, property here, I put a building up, built a building here, uh, almost twelve years ago, um, all right on Main Street down here. Um, I served in federal law enforcement for twenty-seven and a half years, I've been in the building trades for over thirty-something years, um. I worked with a very diverse group of people, say the least, in my years within the federal system. Um, I run a lot of projects, multimillion dollar projects for the federal parole prisons, um, and did that, and, uh, as part of the union, I did a lot of negotiations, a lot of mediation, um. I was in the courts, I've, uh, got case law in my name, doing different things, uh, representing people with legal issues and stuff like that, um. Was on the federal eighth grade survey for twenty-five years, and that is how the federal employees on the side that I was, was, were a great employee. Because that's how we got a pay raise, we actually had to go in the southern metro area, and we contacted the big companies up there in order. They did not have to do this, so I had to talk them into why it was good for them, because when the survey and all the stuff come back to them, uh, we job matched and everything else to see, so our wages never increased anymore than what it was how it worked it was, and I did that, worked my way up to that, um. And, uh, I'd just like to be involved, I guess, uh, I've been an Orinoco worker many times and, uh, different things, and, uh, I've got time to give back to the community, because you can't always take from the communities, uh, it's always good to give back to the community, and I'm, um, and so I put my name up to this.
I'm Jeff Shuppi, I'm the owner of Shaw Tracy Signs, um, I bought the company about four and a half years ago, um, from Brad Tracy and Connie Shaw. And, ever since I've been here, um, I've just noticed what an opportunity that this city has to develop, and I didn't know, you know, the, the nature of the past of not, you know, city water and sewer and things like that. But with all of those things in place, it has such a major opportunity, being basically a northern suburb of Rochester, and in my mind, um, having a hand in that is, to me, just, it's fun, I, I, I think there's such an opportunity for young people to develop here, and, and, you know, a lot of the people that I work with at Shaw Tracy live in, they can't afford to live in Rochester, they live in surrounding communities, you know, all over the place, St. Charles, Plainview, Zambrota, um, Hammond, you know, ki- kind of elsewhere besides Rochester, and if Orinoco can provide, um, you know, more for them without having to go into Rochester, um, I think that's a major opportunity, and it's a blank slate, you know, there's, there's, or, I don't, I don't want to sound negative, but there's not, not much here, right, there's not much in the form of retail, there's not much in the form of, um, things for people to do, uh, all the way from young kids to, um, seniors, and, you know, so depending on the right situation and the right combination, I feel that, um, you know, with the proper planning and the proper strategy, we can attract, uh, the, what we want, you know, so from the very beginning, if we do it right, um, I see that as a big opportunity. I don't live here, I live in Berger Heights.
You don't live here yet, right?
Right now.
Hello, I'm Jessie Mays, um, I own the schoolhouse in town, uh, I bought it in two thousand eighteen, and I've been slowly renovating it, but we're getting close, and super excited to hopefully open the doors soon, uh, hopefully maybe this summer, um. I've tried to kind of pair up with Gold Rush, but thankfully, we really haven't dug too deep, because it's just been a big, long process, but we're getting very close, we're painting, and floors should go in soon, so hopefully open the door soon, um, I kind of grew up, uh, in Orinoco on a farm on County Route eighteen, so I've kind of passed through, not really, I mean, I moved in and out quite a bit, but I've passed through this town, um, my whole life, um, I agree with Jeff, I think Orinoco has great potential, um, I'm excited what the schoolhouse can bring and what we can, you know, get creative with as far as a community and social events, and kind of hitting on some of those things, offerings, I mean, it's not gonna be food, well, it could be food, but, um, you know, I think it's a four, four walls and a roof for really whatever Orinoco and the residents want to see it as, and I hope it is a positive impact, and people will enjoy it and use it for what they want, um, but along with that, I just think there's so much potential here, growth here. I know that there's people that have lived here their whole life, and there's a lot of new people that have lived here, so to combine, combine those two different, uh, perspectives, uh, respectfully, and, um, just find a good balance of what could work, um, I think, I don't know if it goes on a website, but, uh, you know, it says Orinoco is kind of a hidden gem. Um, so, you know, you don't want to completely overrun the space and take away from that, but also, you know, offer things that we're gonna hold people here, um, and little shops, and make it a cute main street, and, um, just give people a reason to drive through town, um, my background, I have a degree in hospitality and tourism management, I've done event, I did events in Colorado for about seven years, and then we moved here in two thousand sixteen, and I've kind of bopped around, I'm currently doing, um, Zambrota Ford's social media marketing, not their commercials, I don't, I don't come up with that, but, um, I do all their, uh, social media platforms and plan all their social events, yeah, um, so it's a fun, fun way to be in the community and online and just get creative, um, but again, just, uh, excited to see Orinoco grow and be a part of it, I, I've been a part of different groups throughout my life, and, and being a part of a board like this, I feel like would make me feel that much more involved, and, um, just, I like to be in the conversation, and with the schoolhouse, I would like to know more people in town and, and collaborate, and just be a part of whatever that might be coming, coming our way, so, uh, yeah, good things, good things ahead.
All right, for the answer, Skylar, Jamie's there.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Hi.
My name's Marsha Krieger, and I'm so glad to hear someone mention Colorado, because I moved here from Colorado four years ago with my husband when I retired as United States District Judge for the District of Colorado. Um, I, I also hear the, the federal law enforcement voice there and recognize that role, uh, very familiar with that, my background obviously is in law. But it's also now growing in this community, I am the president of the Homeowners Association for Riverwood. Um, and I, and I have to tell you, my husband and I chose this area to locate in because it is so wonderful. Um, I'm a Colorado native, born and raised in a suburb of South Denver, and there are many aspects of, I, Orinoco that remind me of Littleton. And I have to tell you, it, it's a treasure, it is a gem, that's exactly the way I would describe it as well. I'm fortunate to have time in a semi-retired status to be able to devote time and energy and expertise to help Orinoco make the transition from what it is today to what it wants to be in the future, and I agree very much with the statement of balance. Um, it's terribly important from my perspective that the various interests and needs and concerns be balanced. My judicial crew, career was both as a trial judge in the federal district court, and I was the chief judge of that court at, um, for seven years, um, but also as a bankruptcy judge. And I was a bankruptcy judge for eight years, um, that taught me a great deal about development projects. Um, I had been a commercial lawyer before that, so I'm familiar with financing and commercial development and residential development and real estate law and things like that, but i- it's interesting to see when businesses fail, why they fail. Um, and development projects, when they go into a reorganization process in chapter eleven, um, why they succeed, and what propels them in the directions that they go, and as some of you may know, municipalities also can go through bankruptcy, and I've had the opportunity to deal with that as well. Um, it's, it's important, I think, as Orinoco goes forward, to be thoughtful, to be balanced, to involve folks in the process. Um, the fact that people disagree is not something I'm unfamiliar with. And I'm happy to, to, to bring whatever I can as far as legal expertise, I'm not an expert in Minnesota law, but I usually can recognize a problem that does require a legal opinion, and would be glad to, to do that. Um, this is an opportunity for me to return something to Minnesota and to Orinoco, um, it's a very special place here.
Thank you, um, let me go to Skylar on Zoom, and then we'll come to Jamie.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, yes.
All right, hey, I'm Skylar Brightenstein, uh, lived in Orinoco going on seventeen years this year. Uh, many, many years ago, prior to coming to Orinoco, uh, I got a business degree, pursued flying along the way, uh, was a retail manager for multiple opticals over the years, so I've done both lab and retail management, uh, my passion, my love is flying, um, I've been doing that, gosh, professionally since two thousand. Uh, twenty-ten, I, we had an empty, somewhat empty ballot on council, and I, in twenty-eleven, I ran against some other people and got appointed to council, got re-elected in, uh, a couple of years after that, and, uh, for five of the six years, uh, served as vice mayor. Uh, since about twenty-twelve, I've been volunteering at the Orinoco Food Shelf, and then the Dorothy Day House in Rochester. To say that we, I love our community is probably just an understatement, like all of you, which is why I appreciate all of you being here. Uh, I didn't, I could have easily moved my kids several times, so I wouldn't have to commute to a job. Um, I was always the new kid, I saw, I, I hate to say I coined the term, but I think I coined the term when I was on council about the hidden gem of southeast Minnesota, um, and I wanted my kids to grow up in our neighborhood. I guess I care so much about Orinoco, with the job that I have, I can be based almost anywhere in the country, but it doesn't feel like home till I come back to Orinoco. Um, I have a unique job that does take me away a lot, um, in terms of hours of the month, I work less than the typical person, but when you include travel time, it's kind of a wash, uh, I'm unique also in that when I am gone, I have a lot of times on overnights that I can work on projects or phone calls. Um, uh, heck, I was doing it earlier today for something else, um, I guess you got, just want to keep it short, but, uh, I'm just happy to be here and be considered.
Thanks, Carter. Amy, thanks for joining us.
Sounds good, it's great to see you all, I apologize for being late. So I'm Jamie, but I live, um, I live at nine-nine-zero Cedar Point Lane, um, and we have lived in the community for about, um, six or seven years now. Um, we chose Orinoco because we were merging two families together, so we were looking for a place to raise our fourteens, and so we have a thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and six, no, wait, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old right now, they're all just having birthdays, um, so, you know, we can talk about that later. Um, but we really did a lot of time trying to spend time on, um, where we're gonna take this next step in our life, and on a really beautiful home, um, in Orinoco. Um, and we really loved it here, uh, my partner, Nick, has been a part of the homeowner association, and he just stepped off of that, and I just stepped into that role as well, so part of that group, um, a little bit about myself, I have a little bit of a unique upbringing, which is one of the reasons why I was excited about this opportunity. Uh, I grew up in the inner city of Minneapolis, um, on the south side, so Lakeland Third, Powderland Park neighborhood, I was raised by a single mom, um, who had me in high school, so we moved around a lot in the inner city, um, but what she taught me was to get involved, um, because that way you could understand what was going on and make a difference. And so ever since I was little, I was on her hip or on her side, um, being a part of, um, block groups, um, and at that time, it was to keep the gangs and the drugs out of the neighborhoods. Um, then it became the Neighborhood Association, so we were a part of those types of things, so it was always just a part of who I was and how I was raised. Um, I went to Oxford College, I have a business degree, um, I put myself through college, I played multiple sports and got scholarships, um, and, uh, worked a lot to get through that. Um, during that time, this is part of the story, um, I met a boy and followed him through rural South Dakota, I'd never been close to a cow or anything rural in my entire life. Um, and so it was a really interesting experience, I love life really openly, and I love to learn, um, and so I stepped into that space, um, to try to learn as much as I can. Um, and so that town was a community of thirteen hundred people, it was the city hub, um, and I really enjoyed my time there, we lived there for about, um, seven or eight years. And, um, during that time, uh, majority of my time there, um, I was very involved, as you might have guessed, so I joined the Chamber of Commerce, that got me a chance to understand how the community worked, um, I sat in the president role of the chamber for, um, I want to say four of the six years that I was on the board. Um, during that time, uh, one of the things that we recognized was that Main Streets, uh, were, um, going away in rural communities, and so I led a charge to do a community needs assessment to try to understand what were our strengths and what were the regional strengths, um, and so we brought three counties together to do that work, um, and through that work, what we understood is that we wanted to establish an economic development agency and community development organization to support Main Street growth, um, and for long-term vision to sustain the, um, sustain the community. Um, I learned a ton in that because bringing people together, as you mentioned, is really difficult, we all have different lived experiences, um, we have different challenges, we have different, um, opinions. Um, and to build an economic development agency that served three counties, with three different city councils, um, was a big challenge, but I think um, that I helped to let that effort by building strong relationships, um, it's not my job, it's our job, and so I really try to listen, um, and work together to do those things. Um, so that was a really great experience while living in South Dakota, along with all kinds of other great stories of being, um, in a rural community, uh, we started having kids and got married there and decided that we wanted to move closer to family, um, and so we moved to Rochester, and we've been in this community for, um, about, um, sixteen, seventeen years now in this region. Um, uh, in my application, I noted that in the last, uh, part of my career, for the last eight years, I've been part of the Destination Medical Center initiative. So, um, I worked for a male clinic, and I worked in a number of different roles for the organization, um, and when the D N C initiative started coming up, um, I volunteered some time to help do some, um, work and understanding, um, what was needed to set, um, set up that organization. Um, and then about eight years ago, stepped into a role I formally help now and do that work, um, so Male Clinic dedicates my time to the D N C initiative, and, um, I've held a number of different positions over the last eight years in that role, um, uh, it helped to develop, um, like the, the Discovery Square sub-district, which is um, focused on diversifying the economy, so bringing less science companies to Rochester, um, and building out what does that look like. Um, I've done a variety of other projects, but my focus right now is community, we, we, the D N C initiative, so we spend a lot of time working with stakeholders, um, both in and around Rochester, to make sure that, um, we understand, um, and are hearing and having dialogue with our community about what input is important, um, and so I spend most every day doing that, um, including last night, it was on until ten o'clock last night, um, working with the community, so it's it's in, I'm hoping that in this role I can draw upon those things to help, um, so that's all that I want to be.
Well, thanks, everyone, those are very introductory comments, and we all appreciate those as well, so, um, we do have a, um, a list of questions to choose from, and, um, I can, I can start off the discussion with one question, and then other council members may have others too. So, well, it's about the same amount of time, um, same time, we don't want to be here till nine o'clock either, so I guess if you want to be specific and, and to the point that we'd appreciate that as well, but by all means, there will be a opportunity at the end to share any thoughts that our questions don't touch on, or, uh, you want to make sure that you share with, and so please take that opportunity to share those comments at the end, so. Well, the first question, and we'll start with, uh, we'll start with Jessie, uh, Jamie, I'm sorry, Jamie and Jessie are, okay, sorry about that. We'll start with Jamie, and the question is, um, what would be your first priority in providing direction to the E D As?
Good question, um, so in majority of my work, uh, the first thing that I do, um, is try to understand what, um, information is out there, um, and, um, I spend time in the community, listening and understanding what the community concerns are, um, what ideas are, um, a lot of times in my role, I build the new strategies, um, develop new ways of thinking and doing things in our community, um, and that's typically where I start, is, um, listening and learning and trying to understand what the community needs are. Um, and then my next step is typically to go and spend time in other communities to try to understand what we can learn from those communities as well. Um, I think there's a lot to learn from other spaces, it doesn't all apply to us, um, but we also don't need to recreate the wheel, um, and I'd like to take those pieces and then begin to do some work around understanding what other people's feedback around those, um, and share that information, so then we can start to build something.
Jan?
I guess the, the first thing is to be able to get your committee together, to understand each other, and understand what the community, what direction they would like us to go, and what the needs of the community, and, uh, what the desires are, and what the limitations are of, um, what the community can handle and do, so I think it's, uh, it's important, first of all, for this group, it's gonna be starting out new, it's gonna be easiest way for me to say it, we're gonna crawl, and then we'll walk, and we're gonna have to get through the crawl stage in a year, or hopefully it goes faster than that, but it's gonna take a while for everything to come together, so we totally understand as a group all the concepts, so we're all legal, we're all doing everything the right way, but understanding which way the community wants to send us.
Yeah?
Um, I agree, um, with Jamie and Jan, I, I think community involvement is a big thing, but I also think there needs to be, um, strategy around how, how, not only how does the community want the city to develop over time, but practically, how should it be developed? And then those two thoughts and things have to meet, the community is not always going to be the end-all, hey, I want all of these things, and the strategic side of the city isn't always as practical either, so there has to be both, you know, both of those have to come together, and I think the Jan's point, the, everyone in the committee has to kind of be on the same page as far as the protocol of how we're going to get all the information and then process it, and then really develop the plan, here's how we're gonna execute on it. Um, I've been in business for a long time, and it's, it, you know, when it, when it's done by a committee, meaning everyone has an opinion, oh, everything is great, but. Oh, everything is great, but at the end of the day, some, a, a group has to basically say, alright, you know, we got all the feedback now, we're gonna not, we're gonna maybe ruffle some feathers here in a certain aspect, but we have to make a decision, we have to go forward, because if you don't, you just keep spinning your wheels and and execution just doesn't happen, so. Practicality combined with strategy, I think, um, is a key element, but it comes with good planning. I mean, again, going back to what I said when I introduced myself, it's a blank slate. There's such an opportunity here, it's such a major opportunity here. So we can do, we can do everything, or what's the saying, oh, we can do anything, but we can't do everything. So really strategizing, get all the feedback as quickly as we can, all get on the same page. Understand that we're not gonna, you know, step on toes or, you know, do something that's not legal or not wise, because it's potentially, you know, gonna be the future plan, but getting to that plan as quickly as we can and then breaking it down into bite-sized chunks to say, alright, that's, this is the biggest bang for our buck. I mean, at the end of the day, the North Star for developing the EDA is, is taxes, is getting money to come into the city, right? So if, if that's the goal, then you have to surround all these decisions with not feeling any motion, but the task at hand and executing on what will get, get us to this point and and make as many people and make this as an attractive um decision as possible.
Everything that Jeff said. Um, no, I think, so I guess I would start with really who's on the EDA, um, maybe start with an idea there, what are our goals? Yes, community is important, but I think you gotta start with the base. We're the ones that are gonna be running it, so let's come up with a base, a, a, a platform of what our direction should be, start there. Community outreach, I love the idea of reaching out to the community. Getting ideas of, of people that live here, that wanna see it grow. Again, that balance with the people that wanna pump the brakes on, on the growth, but you know, combining those ideas to make it still a comfortable, wonderful place to live. Um, and then strategize a plan, uh, a plan, you know, putting a plan in action of categorizing or putting in order what's realistic, what's something we can do right away, what's a bigger, you know, long-term plan? And just kind of taking what we get from the community and our own ideas. Um, and then just putting pen to paper and getting creative, um, and figuring out how we move forward best with that. I think a group of people, um, there can be a lot of opinions. Uh, and that can go many different directions, but I think combined with a, a good group of people, it can be very powerful and we can move mountains and we can, um, you know, also, also assessing whoever does end up being on this board, what our skills are. I mean, clearly, this group of people has a ton of skill sets, so really utilizing your, you know, your skills and and yours, 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 all, you guys all have great, um, great areas of expertise, so really putting into place who's gonna do what with the passions that they have and the experience that they have, and just really putting to use the people that we have on the board and then pulling in everything, uh, you know, all the ideas and what we have to work with in the town. Um, and what we can do, like what, what space we have to work with and and what ideas we can really run with.
It's hard to add anything. I won't try and add anything, but maybe maybe just order it. To me, having the information as to what the city needs, what residents need, what businesses need, helps then give us a body of information to evaluate in order to establish priorities. And it seems to me that that's what I'm hearing, gathering information and then putting it together and coming up with some priorities, both long-term and short-term. And I agree, everybody's got tremendous skills and expertise and perspective. Public confidence in this process is really important to me. And that also means that not only do we do things legally, but we have a a way of operating that's public, that's predictable, that has sort of rules of the road. And that then allows people whose needs may not be at the top of the list. They have confidence that they'll be addressed later on. So I think that's where I would put them, who knows, in that order.
Skylar?
Hello, am I there?
Yes.
Yes, I just say I want you to listen to Housekeeping in the background, I apologize. All these amazing ideas, there's very little to add to, uh, I have about two hours worth, I'll, I'll keep it brief, no, I'm kidding. Seriously, I, I think what's been touched on already is leaning on each member's strengths, whoever those members are. Using that as a brainstorm to then reach out to the community, as we've said, soliciting input. Ultimately, whoever's chosen, um, even if that doesn't include myself, they're gonna be representing OrnoCo and literally kind of guiding a path for it for literally the start of decades. I think what's unique about us and OrnoCo is a lot of times from the research I've done in surrounding communities, they start EDAs to attract growth. Uh, there's a definite lack, and I feel like even though we've been off the radar, and partly that's because we didn't have city water for a long time, we didn't have city sewer and that'll soon be. I think our job, or whoever's job is gonna be, is to shape what I would call smart growth. If you look at all our different uh, uh, what's it called, planning districts, we have just about every kind of property that could be available for sale or developed. Uh, both for business, for residential, uh, somewhere in the community. And so it's not just about attracting any growth, but I think attracting the right growth and doing that with board input and then also community input. That's what I'd say to that, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also don't have a whole lot to add, I'm very encouraged by this group as a whole already. I would, I would say, you know, one of the things that I would be interested in doing is, is uh first, speaking with the council and the mayor and learning a little bit about what's already on the table, who's looking to invest in our community already? What farms that are looking to be developed, you know, who, who's already showing interest? And and kind of uh identify what those are, I also would be interested in looking at some of these maps uh and identifying, you know, what, what are our intentions, are there certain areas, certain roads that we see as as uh having the most potential to suit the community better. Ever since I learned about the EDA, I've, I've got a little app on my phone I use for real estate, it's actually a hunting app. But it shows all the parcels and who owns them and you zoom in and do not really, I just love it for real estate. And I've been playing with that and thinking, well, I wonder if Fifth Street up here is a good place, if we're gonna do a, a grocery store or something that both sides can get to easily. Uh, yeah, things of that nature, I'd like to look at maps and and uh find out who wants to come here, why, and what, you know, again, the top priority being what are the needs of the community and what will work. It's, I think, a pretty common practice would be to have some great ideas and then, well, is it practical though? Do we have enough roofs to support it? Can that business thrive in this community with how little it is today? Uh, things of that nature, so I, I think my first order of business would wanna be to to uh gauge what's already on the table for interest and development and then kind of also work on a, a general development plan, I guess, if you call it that.
Excellent, all good comments, and you, I can't remember exactly who made the comment about the Jamie or Jesse, you're talking about, or Jamie, you're talking about EDAs in communities and obviously we're last to the, last to the race here with EDAs, some of the people Pine Island have been in EDAs and Dover Yoda for twenty, thirty, forty years, so. Our sewer project is what was a limiting factor, so there's no question that's gonna be a big catalyst, and it is, so. Alright, great answers. Um, so would a council member have a question you'd like to ask of the group? We should pick any random. We'll start with uh, Jan.
So Jan. Question I would have is what, name one specific business that you would like to see come to OrnoCo? And, and to me, this is exciting, being a, a OrnoCo resident for thirty-plus years, having different perspective and wanting to see.
I guess the answer, just a quick answer to that one is, is that the thing about what OrnoCo has, it's fifteen minutes away from here. I can't, I can't foresee a grocery store moving into, to OrnoCo because it would not be big enough, it could not get the prices down enough. Um, your gas stations kind of take your pizza, I don't see a pizza business moving in, you got two gas stations that serve pizzas. You kind of take that away from that, so I guess as business, is I would say that I see in OrnoCo, cause of your land and how it is, is that to invite a bigger business in takes up more, more property, and the reason I state that is, is that when I look across the highway as your two trailer parks, or your two uh trailer sales over there, you've got REA People Power over there, you've got the um one that is over there that is a cloud thing, takes property, you employees, very low noise, very, you don't even know the people are even there, I found good neighbors, but they bring in a good tax base to everybody, to what you wanna do. So I guess what I, when I take a look at that is I don't see, I don't see a lot of downtown OrnoCo, I don't see a lot of retail moving into downtown OrnoCo simply for the land that's on Main Street here. There is not enough room on Main Street for that to happen, if you know what the, what the road right-of-ways are and everything else, a setback would be is there'd be no parking or anything else like that. So it kind of goes out a little bit farther, so I, as I look at it, is, is bring some type of uh industry or uh like REA or something like that, the cloud, the people that would do that. That give you a good tax base, but keep your community kind of as it is. Because there is, you're right, there is not a lot to do in OrnoCo. You have to go, if you wanna have a beer and eat, you have to go across the highway to Tilly's to get that and that was shut down, a new person moved in there, so that's not a steady, you don't know where that's gonna be, so. I guess I would like to see a, us go out and achieve a, a bigger business to come into OrnoCo. Uh, a Shad Tracy-type business, uh, 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 blue collar type thing to be able to build up there, buy the gas, you're up in that cornfield that's been for sale forever, so that the people can see from the highway, it's growing, Thompson Overhead Garage Door is a wonderful thing up there, of good business to come into, into OrnoCo and do things, and it's more businesses like that, that uh the trades-type businesses, I think. Because everything else is ten thousand mile highway. To get.
I think it's premature to say what business would come in right now, um, based on, you know, what we were saying in the last question, gathering all the input and, and whatnot that's here. I called the um Pine Islands, I, I put an inquiry to the Pine Island EDA just to ask anybody that would talk to me, um a million questions, and, and a guy named Mitch Mossman, which I believe is, he works for SEDA who's on the EDA in Pine Island, was the one that um fielded my call, and we had a long conversation and I posed the question to him, the chicken or the egg, you know, so I said, do you develop the whole downtown and then try to attract people around the downtown? Do you segment out a bunch of housing developments, do you bring in an industrial um company, do you set up a grocery store, do you, you know, I was asking him a million questions. And he didn't have an answer for it, you know, basically he was like, I don't know, you know, and I said, if I were to ask your colleagues in SEDA, what would they say, and they say, he's like, I don't know, they said, i- i- it's kind of, you kind of have to have your strategy based on segments and you know, planning and zoning plays a huge part of that, to say, where should, what should we have and what should we segment? How should a downtown look? Should we purposefully put more parking in here and widen everything so that we can make sure that when we build, we can have parking for it? You know, I mean, there's all those planning things, you know, so I think it's as much as I would like to say, you know, what that first business would be, or you know, what it would be, I think you kind of have to take one step before that and say what's likely um to happen, or what are, what are all the possibilities based on all the input that you get and all the research that you do? And then, you know, I, I think there are certain businesses that people will travel to OrnoCo for. You put a restaurant in OrnoCo, people are gonna come from all over the place, because there is nothing besides Tilly's here. You know, if you, if you put in any sort of retail, it's gonna have to be pretty spectacular, cause then people, you know, and maybe it's unique, because then to make it a destination type of a place versus an everyday convenience type of a thing. So there's, there's, the recipe is yet to be figured out, it is what I think.
I agree, um, I think it's hard to say, but what I would picture, I think, going back to not reinventing the wheel, I think about, and I think about this all the time, like I live in Dodge Center and our Main Street is completely dead, and I look at Zambroda and they are thriving. And I always think like, what is happening here, what, what don't we have that they have, we have the same population, I know OrnoCo is much smaller, but just that same, like, why is this working and this isn't? Um, so that always boggles my mind, and so that would be a big part of figuring out. You know, I mean, I guess we don't really have anything to say, why isn't it working, cause there's just nothing here yet, but as we develop, I think looking at uh different towns and seeing what works, what doesn't, I think it's not, in my head, it's not big new huge Walmarts and grocery stores, it's, it's keeping OrnoCo the little gem, but re, you know, renovating the space, a lot of the spaces we have, I'm sure there's room for development outwards, I'm just in my mind right now thinking Main Street. Um, but I think, you know, renovating the, the beautiful buildings that we do have, um, keeping that aesthetics here, but um adding, so it is, it would, it is gonna be a destination, people aren't driving through OrnoCo, so what's gonna pull people here? Um, making it a fun family trip on a Sunday afternoon, you know, a ice, little ice cream shops or a brewery or little things like that, that I think will start a little bit more of a buzz in our town, um, I think that's more of a realistic start and a fun, fun place to start, and it might not be the biggest, you know, dollar amount bringing people here, but I think it's an easy way to start, you know, little ideas that we can start popping into towns that are, are existing buildings that are here with the sewer system that obviously makes maybe things a little bit um easier, you know. Different places have tried to come in, but due to the sewer system, it was a little bit harder, so maybe, maybe that uh aspect will help, but I really think renovating this, this Main Street, popping in smaller ideas first and then looking outward to those bigger, bigger opportunities, um, as far as restaurants or hotels or whatever that might be. My mind right away goes to Main Street renovation and uh just putting a little bit of love back in the bones that we already have. Um, bringing in things that a family would, would look forward to, um, utilizing the river, and we already have tubes and canoes, but making it a day thing where you come to OrnoCo, have pizza or a breakfast shop or ice cream in the afternoon or or that may be, I think there's just so much potential with what we already have. And then once that rolls, we have room to get bigger and bigger and better and bigger ideas.
I'm always reluctant to, to advance what I would like to see without knowing what other people would like to have OrnoCo be, and in particular, I think of all the people who live in the housing development where I live and in the other two here on the other side of the highway who work for big businesses in Rochester, for Mayo, for IBM. Um, or maybe work for smaller businesses somewhere and commute, and I'm I'm interested particularly in knowing what it is they would like OrnoCo to have, that it doesn't have. Would they like an Italian restaurant? I'd sign up for that. Um, would they, um, would they like um activities in the park? Would they like a brewery where they can go and get a sandwich on Saturday afternoon? Would they like um a place um where they could rent bikes? I mean, it, I don't know what it is they would like as the residents of the town. I mean, it, I don't know what it is they would like as the residents of the town. Um, or maybe what they would like is businesses that essentially have no visible footprint. That contribute to the tax base and just let them do whatever they want to do and they'll. Go to Rochester to the city for whatever, whatever things. Um, do they want people to come here to town um and spend money? Is that what we want our downtown to be? Is a place that attracts people from other places to come and spend money? I don't know. So I can't tell you what business I would choose, except for the Italian restaurant.
Very good. Uh, Skylar?
I love carbs. Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, it's with a blank slate. It's, it's. So much potential, so much opportunity and I think rightfully so addressing. What residents feel is important. Um, I guess I also, I also echo the fact of trying to. I don't want to say rehabilitate, but. Maybe grow more of the Main Street feel, keeping it more Orinoco unique. Um, at some point, I don't know that it would be first. I, I guess I'd like to see us with an assisted living. Um, we do have a future land use plan that is a pretty good roadmap. I think that we can use to. I guess right size the types of businesses or communities within our community. Um, be it maybe eventually multifamily townhomes or things like that. So it, it is really hard to put a finger on what the first thing should be, but at some point. Like Jan said, I, I don't see us doing much with the Super Walmart or a Hy-Vee not so far away, but. Uh, I guess I see more smaller scale within assisted living. I'd almost bet dollars to donuts at some point we'd see a hotel, but I think the priorities have to be. Uh, kind of in conjunction of council, planning and zoning, our future land use plan. And then everybody on the EDA with uh, community input. Thank you.
High quality coffee?
Thank you.
Uh, I'm kind of teasing, but not really teasing, uh, because I, I see high quality coffee, things like a Subway sandwich shop or some of these things that are small. Inexpensive, easy to operate and, and under high demand, right? I mean, those kinds of things are set up for success. Um, and then the other thing that comes to mind, uh, you're speaking to, you know, your employees, not being able to afford and. Uh, housing in Rochester, I know that affordable housing is a curse word in, in my industry, but um. I, I think a lot of the hurdles to affordable housing include uh, you know, government expenses and things that, that perhaps. Uh, perhaps we could work through and, and whether it's zero lot lines, there's, I think there's different ways to get creative. With some affordable, affordable housing and a lot of folks have a not in my backyard mentality. As it is, Orinoco seems pretty split between, you know, older Orinoco and newer Orinoco and the houses, size and values and things. Um, I, I would love to, to work towards a solution of some affordable housing.
Last one. It's very unique to be on the end of this. Um, I really appreciate everything that everybody said. I think. It's one of the great things about building a board is all the different perspectives and how we can build on each other's ideas. I'm like, I want to respond like, yes. So it's very exciting. So any thoughts for me? Um. Uh, in the work that I've done in the past, I really tried to lean into data, uh, for data driven decision making. It's not. DMC was not my plan establishing the economic development agency in South Dakota. It was not a Jamie plan. It was a community plan. And so I think. I do too have a hard time saying this is what I would champion for, cause I'm at a different phase. And my age and my patterns in my life are different than other people. Um. So I really would lean into that data to say what is there. The other things that I think are important to do, which I heard themes around is what are we doing well already? Cause a lot in growth in Rochester and other communities is um, it's easier to lean into what you're doing good at. Because it attracts more energy, people are excited about it instead of looking over here and trying to start something new. There's time for that. But I think we can really look and say, what are we doing well right now and how can we build momentum? Um, cause when you see a group of people, you're like, hmm, what's happening? I want to go over there and be with them. So I think that's something for us to consider is like, what are we doing really well? Um, what has been um successful? I think something else, um, with my work with DMC right now and um my focus right now is trying to understand how cities are. Recovering from the pandemic. Most downtowns across our country have seen significant loss of retail, entertainment, dining. Um, and it has critically impacted our downtowns. And what's interesting about us is that we are not having to go through that and we have this blank slate. So I think there's an opportunity to say, what does a new downtown look like? Um, what can we learn from the pandemic and how can we use that as a strength um as we go forward? Um, and then I feel like um, sometimes. I feel like sometimes living in Orinoco, I, I. I step into my yard and I see how beautiful that it is and I look at the river and I. Um, breathe the fresh air and I enjoy it so much and being with the community. Um, and there are times that I feel like. Um, there could be a stronger connection to community. Um, and I wonder how we could do that in the Main Street area of drawing our community together to do that. Um, cause I, we hang out on our cul-de-sac and our kids run around and play and we have our little street times and so I might do a movie or. You know, we might pop down the other day, came into the um, to the um, post office. I didn't know anybody and I couldn't wave at anybody that really knows things. And I think about, you know, how can we do that? And it doesn't have to be big. It could even just be testing ideas. So like the brewery, could we do a pop-up brewery and let's just see what people think about it? Or could we do a pop-up art show or could we do, it doesn't like have to be really big, but we can test small ideas. Um, we can get feedback from the community and then try. And so many times that leads to more ideas and so. Um, I can't say what I would say first I want to do. I would say let everyone have a pop-up Italian night. And do something and say, would people come down for some music and food and beer? And what do people think? Does it work? Does it not work? You know, is there someone that wants to try a little bit more often? Cause that's what inspires other people to invest and to do more. So then I think it helps to us buy in, our community members buy into those spaces. Um, and then that means that we'll go and spend money there and we'll put our time there.
I'll go next.
Question break.
Okay, we, we've talked about all the wonderful ideas that there are with Orinoco, where it can go and what's going on. Um, what parts of the city do you see as a barrier to a potential investor? Or developer in this area?
Um, yeah. I. I don't know many people in the community. Um, I'll say that. I met a few, you know, coming down here. Um, and I'm, you know, starting to meet more, but. Partially, partially is because I don't have a go, a space to go to, to pull out of the community. But my perception of the community is that. It's taken a long time to, you know, the, the city water, then the city sewer. Um, I don't know the exact reason again, but my perception is that. A lot of the residents didn't necessarily want to embrace change. Um, you know, the wanted to keep it quiet, cozy, so on and so forth. Um, so maybe change wasn't in the cards to do that. Um. And I, I mean, even with the, the former owners of Shot Tracy, it was, it was an old outdated business. The, the, the culture was outdated, the, the way it was run, a lot of the, the individuals that worked there. Um, they wanted to stay in the past. They didn't want technology. They didn't want change. And I was looking for that because I knew that. Once people realize that it can be actually easier and the other side of change is actually. Much better. Um, if I could have a hand in maybe changing their minds. That they would actually look forward to it and not only look forward to it, but contribute to it and make it. Much better and have influence on making it better. Um, I see Orinoco, I mean. Another simple example is, why is an industrial sign company in the middle of a downtown Orinoco? It just doesn't make sense, does it? I mean, we're a big building here, right on the main drag. If we're not retail, we're not a nice coffee shop, we're not a brewery, we're not any, any of that. For me, it just does not make sense at all. And um. I see redeveloping that property into something that contributes to the downtown area. Um, maybe in a town. But uh, I, I see um, major opportunity to. Help the community come along to make it a positive change for moving forward. Um, with expertise and outside thoughts. I mean, you've heard. The amazing things tonight already just from everybody who's wanting to contribute to that. So I think it's. The opportunity is in front of us to do that. And once people feel like they're a part of the change in the five-year voyage, it will. It'll help move in that direction.
Uh, I just wrote down a couple uh, things that came to mind. Um, and the question was, what's going to prevent the development here, correct? Um, I mean, I think our location, we are super easily, easily accessible, you know, our, to turn into Orinoco now is a little bit more complicated. I think. That will be a challenge, but obviously with good marketing and advertisement and what we do to get ourselves out there again, um. Well, that will be a thing of the past, you know, people, obviously people know how to get here, but I just don't think we're a off the highway attraction. Um, so that I think is a setback, but again, we can, we can get over that. Um, you know, I think kind of how you mentioned people, I think we need to open people's minds. Um. The people that maybe aren't willing to change or aren't going to be rooting for growth. Um, I think. You know, instead of pushing them aside, I think having those conversations, um, making them feel a part of it in a direct way. You know, having direct conversations with people, not emails and flyers and whatnot, like really getting in to the community. When I've done. Group things in the past or when I've needed volunteers or whatnot, um, I've always thought, you know, the, the blank. Email or flyer or whatever, you know, is, is a little impersonal, but when I've reached out to people directly and had those conversations. It goes way further and people feel like they're heard and that somebody really is interested in, in hearing what they have to say. However, we end up doing that, um, will be a different conversation, but I think getting in front of those people. And making them feel like, we just mentioned, a part of the change, getting them excited, um. And making them feel like they, they have a say in what's going to happen here in Orinoco. Um, I just, I just thought, going back to location, you know, Mizepa's saying of where the hell is Mizepa? That's kind of what I think of Orinoco, like have people heard about Orinoco? When I talk about the schoolhouse, I'm like, do you know Orinoco? And it's kind of a fifty fifty hit on whether people, like I know of it, but haven't really been there. So I think just really getting Orinoco out there, putting us on the frontline and getting people excited about this little gem that we're trying to grow. Um, I think funds are obviously going to be a big, big part of it. We're going to have all these great ideas swirling around, but like, how are we going to pay for it? So getting creative there and, and really figuring out what we're going to do as a group to get to a financial stat, uh. Financial spot where we can start moving forward with some of these ideas. Um, and then I guess I just, I already talked about this, but just finding those open-minded people that are excited about the community. They're not open-minded, having those conversations and um, just pushing forward, getting people excited about. A, a big movement here in Orinoco. I think it's definitely doable with the right team, the right attitude. Um, uh, just to open the eyes of people to see the potential of Orinoco.
Good business lawyers are often known as wet blankets. And, and y- your question really is a wet blanket question. I think the weakness that Orinoco has is, has been mentioned in to. In different respects, but it's the downtown area. And I'm not going to talk about what the downtown area looks like now, but I want to draw some attention to. The kinds of businesses that we've all talked about liking to have in the downtown area. Those are all low profit margin businesses. They're businesses that didn't make it through the pandemic. And they're having difficulty getting funding in this economy. Um, in order to expand and to relocate. Um, it's going to be hard to have piecemeal businesses. In downtown Orinoco without probably some kind of aid or subsidy to those businesses. Now, what that suggests is that that's probably not the place that you start with your expansion. You may start, I would think, with the idea of attracting some bigger business that isn't dependent on the. Economy that ha- is deep in funding, that has some ability to relocate with minimal impact. Increase your tax base and then you have a little bit more flexibility. To attract some of the charming businesses. The, the, the retail businesses, the small food vendors, the coffee, the, the, the Italian restaurant. Um, and, and I think that economic reality. Goes hand in hand with the observation of what's in Orinoco downtown right now. What the setbacks are, what the zoning is, all of that figures into, where do you start? And where, what's your second priority? Um, now obviously of, if some chain food vendor were to come to Orinoco and say, hey, we want to locate here. It, maybe you don't have such an issue with regard to whether they're going to be able to survive. But a chain vendor is going to have, also be looking at what is the traffic and that takes you to the, we're off the beaten path. And it also is sort of contrary to the gem-like quality of Orinoco that we all want to preserve. So, um, I, I would say that. The development of the downtown area is, is probably the most vulnerable.
Adam? Oh, Skylar, I'm sorry. Sorry, Skylar.
I, I don't care what order we go in. Can you just repeat the question one more time just so I don't ramble?
What I was looking for is, is we talked about a lot of the positive things that are going on in Orinoco. And I was looking at what's a barrier, what's a negative for a potential investor or developer in Orinoco.
Thank you. Uh, I think part of it has been touched on already. Uh. I think maybe even by Marsha in terms of the smaller businesses, the barriers to entry. Uh, with economic development, we may or may not, depending on budget, be able to explore TIF. Or tax increment financing, uh, reduce permit fees, do things like that to help them get started. Um, I think maybe a, uh, not a negative, but a barrier is maybe. The vision that the business or business owner has versus what we as a community have and trying to convey. Keeping that image and uniqueness of Orinoco. Um, cause I guess I contend, we don't want to just. Agree to any business that shows up and has money, but um. Do what we can to encourage the uniqueness and. I guess all the talk about Main Street, maybe extending that Main Street feel more into the. Closer to the highway and then as was previously said, we could grow it back down towards downtown. Um, so I think it. I don't think it's a true barrier, but I think maybe imagination and being able to. I guess show Orinoco for what it is and sell it on the, the positives. For lack of a better term. Thank you.
And I guess for me, the first barrier that comes to mind is the highway and, and I don't, you know, it's kind of like we're split in. Our small town split in two small towns to a degree. So if I'm a, a developer or somebody who wants to. Invest in Orinoco, which side of the highway do I put my business on? And, and why? Um, I hadn't put a whole lot of thought into, into industrial, but I, I think that that seems like a, a fairly logical place, maybe not to start right away, but, but bringing in something that has quite a few employees. Obviously, that, you're not just bringing in employees, there you're also bringing customers to the coffee shop and everything else that, that comes with it. So, um, yeah, I feel like the highway is going to be a hurdle. And then of course, certain property owners, if, if we're, you know, i- i- in the path of development, some folks want to put their anchors down and say, I'm not going anywhere. And well, that's okay. Uh, but, but sometimes that could, you know, we have a grand plan or this seems something, something seemed really sensible. But individual homeowners get in the way of that. And sometimes you see that, obviously, in other towns. I, I think of uh, in Rochester, the Samaritan Bethany on Broadway and Seventh Street. And, and you know, this big old Samaritan Bethany, and then a little greenhouse, and then more Samaritan Bethany. You know, I think, man, that person stuck it out. Good for them. But I imagine we'll have some of those kind of hurdles as well.
Yeah, I feel like, um, a few things that come to mind for me, we just only recently on a project that I've been working on for Rochester is, uh, there's a new piece of work that's really looking at how to attract companies, um, life science companies to move to Rochester. Um, and we did a big awareness survey to try to understand what was their current perceptions and understanding of the community. Um, and one of the questions that we asked in the front was, what is your level of awareness of Mayo Clinic? Um, which was like ninety-five percent, and these were site selectors and CEOs of life science companies, so think four hundred, four hundred people total. And what is your awareness or perception of Rochester, Minnesota? And that was five percent. Um, so there's, there's really good data in there. It also tells you about the opportunity gap in that space, because if only five percent know, look at all these people that can know now about the opportunity. And I think Orinoco is a bit like that, is that there's probably not a lot of awareness. And that is probably one of the biggest barriers, um, is figuring out and how do we work with CETA or other organizations to grow awareness of the opportunity here. I feel like something that I see a lot in my work is, um, our ability to work well with developers, investors, potential business owners. Um, a lot of deals fall apart at that spot. From the big companies that have a lot of money that can stick it anywhere across the country, the small mom and pop that are just trying to start a coffee shop or something else. We have to be willing to work well, respond quickly, have great conversations and build trust. Um, a lot of deals end there, and a lot of those won't come to light, but a lot of deals end there. So figuring out how do we build the processes and policies that allows us, us, a community, staff, government, organizations to do that. Then I think, um, the other one that comes to mind for me is density. Um, I think, um, we touched, our community is spread out, so it's not really, um, it's walkable, but it's not truly walkable, right? You have to kind of drive to get to where you want to go. Um, as we think about building the downtown area, there's not a lot of density as well there. So I think, whatever the plan is, and as we think about how to get through these barriers, I do think we'll have to think about density to support some of the businesses, um, that we would love to have here. Um, and so I think that'll be an important piece for future developers and investors as well as they'll be looking for, um, plans around density and, and how are we growing my slate in that way.
Yeah?
Well, as you guys stated, that, you know, the smaller businesses are the ones that fail probably the quickest. And to do that, I see that, um, there's a lot of things, the barriers. The tribe from Red Wing has bought the property belongs in up here Pine Island. When they develop that, they're, when they start to develop that property and move in there, they're not going to be under the same guidelines on their, on their reservation as what we are here. They say they don't open a casino, they could open a casino, business could grow here in Orinoco in a New York minute, or it could die. Because it could all go, the destination is going to be their reservation up there, depending on what they put in and how they do it. So we have to kind of, it's a great time for us to be doing this now, because we got to kind of get ahead of the curve. Because when they come in, they'll have the money and they'll have the designs and things will happen pretty quick there. It would be nice to see, uh, in my, you'll go down a dirt road. You'll travel down a dirt road in the mud, if you can get service. If the product they sell is what you want, or the food they serve is out of this world. People will drive down a dirt road in a brand new Cadillac and think nothing of it to get there, to get that service that they want to do. I look at it as this diamond in the rough when I talk about businesses. How about we lower some of the medical mail, medical center or medical things? They do a lot of computers and a lot of things on there, that you bring mail. And we start talking to mail and say, you know what? We're ten minutes from town. Parking is abundant in our commu- out here, that we can build and do things for you. So I look at it as going at some of these companies to start bringing some of that base into the, into Orinoco. And they can put the high rise up at Medical Center or do some different things, and they might be able to put a clinic. They might be able to do a clinic here up there. But, you know, on the way out, you give me the idea in the cornfield, what a place for a coffee shop. I can't imagine at three o'clock in the afternoon, I see these people driving through downtown Rochester, all these coffee shops, the cars are lined up. Even waiting to get a cup of coffee at three o'clock in the afternoon, on the way out of town. So the point being is, if they see that up there on the highway and they know something's there, they will drive off that highway and come to us. And so I, I'm just thinking is that you look at some of the medical things, research, everything. If, if Rochester can put a medical building downtown on Fourth Street and say, well, we're going to lure people from around the world to do medical things there, they're ten minutes from downtown to do that. So I think that's something as a group goes and looks at, to me, to do that. And then maybe we have the money to buy you out and say, you know what? Your business doesn't fit here where it is, but we're going to give you money, we're going to buy the land and we're going to get grand money. We're going to have, give you an asset so that you can move, move out and build that better building, do your business in a different place of town, and that opens up that property. And as business comes here, the city hall here sits here, and maybe this is where City Hall should be. Maybe they take this land and develop this, tear the building down, City Hall moves somewhere else. You build the fire department, City Hall altogether, altogether, do that on a different location. That makes sense to do that, and that opens up this whole area in here to build on. So, but the downtown, we, you gotta, in my opinion, you gotta get business going outside before you're going to have money to do anything down Main Street here. Gold Rush is a fantastic thing for this town. It's been on the map for, for fifty years, with your anniversary this year, fifty years they've brought millions of people to this town. When people say, where's Orinoco? I can tell you, there's people in Iowa, there's people all around the country, when you say Orinoco, they say Gold Rush. And that's one thing this community cannot lose. That brings in a lot of money into this town and around its surrounding areas every year. That's a, that's a, that, that is a diamond in the rough and good money for the towns. Uh, we need, that utilizes your downtown, but how efficiently can we do that more to make those vendors happy? Bring more vendors back, more money into this town.
Thank you, good comments. Alright, um.
Yeah, really good comments. This was fantastic. I was worried a long day, so I was worried I'd be sleepy, but no, I'm, no, I'm excited. So good job, everyone. Uh, my question for you is, how would you ensure that Orinoco um, is an inclusive community that attracts and welcomes people of all backgrounds? And ensures they are, they feel safe and included, no matter, you know, any, and no matter what they look like, who they love, um, where they're from, the language they speak. How would you, how would you, you make sure that we ensure that? Um, I mean, I think that starts with, you know, I mean, we can go back to community, starting with our community and everybody that's here in our community, making everybody, regardless of background, you know, all the different areas of, yes, discrimination or, you know, feeling, feelings of, um, I mean, making sure everybody feels included, so starting there with our own people. Um, making sure everybody feels heard. Um, I think the way we end up going about de- development here um, will reflect that, um, if there's people that want to see something, um, keeping everything inclusive, keeping those conversations, um, open and welcome to everybody in the community. And, you know, I think it's important, I think we, you know, you see it a lot now, making sure that there is a good um, ratio of showing that support in each area. Um, I think the way we move forward with development should reflect that. Um, I guess I don't know exactly what that would look like. I think it would be a conversation piece of just making sure however we move forward with redeveloping this town, it's, um, gosh, I, I don't know how, I guess I'm not, I'm, I'm a loss of words of how that would look. I think it would just be important to keep that at the front of mind. Um, you know, starting with community, but then obviously our surrounding areas, there's, um, very diverse towns, you know, reaching into Rochester, um, and all the other surrounding areas. I mean, pulling in, um, kind of again, not re- you know, just reinventing the wheel. I mean, seeing what other communities have done to make feel, people feel included. Um, and just making sure that it's always the front of our statement. I mean, in any communication, it'll go to the, the softer side of things, but all of our marketing and our social media and our community outreach, um, that will be a big base on where we show the community and outsider community who we are and what we're all about. And, um, obviously in this day and age, social media and marketing and advertising is a huge platform. Um, and that would be a, a big, big area that we can, um, put ourselves on a certain level of openness and, um, and make sure that people know that we're, we are open to everyone and anybody. Um, but I guess I don't have clear, strong answer as to how that would reflect in our development. But I think as far as making sure people know that is what we're all about and that we are inclusive and, and we hear and see everyone. Um, I, I would, in my mind right now, just off the fly, I guess, marketing, social media would be our, our biggest platform and outreach. Um, and then figuring out a way to, uh, incorporate that into the, the development, which I think would just come hand in hand with what those areas look like, um, and making sure that it is a diverse development and not just catered to one, I don't even know what that looks like anymore. I don't, I don't know what catering to one type of person looks like. I think we're so developed into open, you know, the openness to everybody these days that, um, it's almost like secondhand. But making sure that we touch on that and, and are, um, sensitive to that and just keeping that conversation, uh, top of mind and that people know that, that is important to us.
I think we have to walk the walk as well as talk the talk. And to me, what that means is that we all pretty much look the same. We have very much the same backgrounds um, to greater or lesser extent. But what we have to do is be making our decisions on objective criteria so that there's no inside track and there's no outside track. We make our decisions based on data, on public meetings, on clearly established criteria, apply the same rules to the same, to everybody. That's the way we say and show that we accept everybody, that we support everybody, that, that we're not making distinctions that people fear that we're going to make.
I started talking and I hadn't pushed the dang button, I apologize. There's, now, Mayor, can you correct me? EDA would fall under open meeting laws, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so by nature, any other than two people talking on the EDA at any one time, anybody more than that, it has to be in a posted open meeting. And we talked about communication, being a welcoming community and being respectful. And in any communication, I think you'd have to, should put out, not only just as marketing, but that open dialogue is welcome, uh, that we are a welcoming community. Um, not just that it's a gimmick, but we believe it in heart. I think there would be opportunity if we get an oppor- uh, maybe happen to get a, a uh, a women owned business or a minority owned business, maybe that's something in the marketing that could be, uh, put out further down the road. But, uh, I believe you do have to just, uh, believe it in your heart and not just make it a talking point. Um, everybody that's in this room tonight, I truly believe, uh, has those right intentions. And I think would, would lead us in the right direction. Thank you.
I think, I thought it's largely would echo, uh, your honors. I didn't, I'm Marsha, I'm sorry. I'm going to finalize names, yeah, Marsha. Um, but, but I, I feel that, that you kind of hit the nail on the head, um, that we, we lead by example, uh, driven with data and let people decide. And I, I'm not even so sure that I agree with pursuing, you know, women owned or minority owned. I, I think it's more of a, come here and do your business, whoever you are, kind of a approach. And I think, I hope, uh, that by establishing, voting for leadership that have a, a mindset of inclusivity, uh, i- is kind of a, almost as much as we can do. Because I think a lot of the, the prejudices and things that people have are kind of deep in their cores. And we're not going to be able to run around and pluck that out of people, uh, we just need to lead by example. So I think that's kind of my short answer.
Um, I really appreciate the discussion. I think, um, trying to jot down notes and figure out the best way to, um, share my thoughts on this. I first go to where I was born and raised, where it was a majority of a black community, and I was one of the only white children in the neighborhood. And, um, I also have a biracial sister. Um, but then also my other experiences, everything in this rural community where there was not a lot of, um, diversity except for, um, the tribal land itself. And just leaning in all of those different experiences and what does it mean to be an inclusive community? Um, because all of those meant different things at different times for me and, um, and where I was and the work that I was doing. And I'd also be remiss not to mention that where my mother bought our, her home, when she was a, when I was a senior in high school, I was actually already out of the house, um, was just two blocks down from where George Floyd was murdered. Um, so it's a huge piece of, uh, my family's life and, um, and the experiences that I've had as I've watched our neighborhood rebuild where my mom was now and family members. Um, because it's, I think being inclusive now means something different than it did from before. And it's something that we're all on different paths and journeys because of the experiences that we've had. Um, and it's very personal to each of us because of those experiences. Um, and so I think it takes all of us to lean in, to build an inclusive community and to share openly. I think that means that we have to have compassion for each other. Um, we have to have, being willing to listen, we have to have the, um, ability to have conversations. Um, because none of us have learned, um, different experiences. And so to be able to say, hey, you said this and I'd love to talk to you about it, I think is really important. So it's a really personal level, not only at a professional level. At a professional level, I will say that I feel like, um, it's important that we all advocate that our boards, um, like the EDA board or others are representative of our community. So really encouraging people from our BIPOC community, women, um, or LGBTQ to, to step into these roles um, is important. Um, that's something that we, um, I think is something important for us to continue to think about is how do we bring those voices forward? Because their lived experiences are very different than ours. I think it does show up in our value system and the way that we conduct ourselves and the way that we hold each other accountable. Um, I think that we have to be very strong and say that we're not tolerant of, um, certain behaviors, and that needs to be a part of what we do. And if, um, um, and so I think that's important. I also feel like, um, and what we're seeing is that there's a lot of, uh, ways in which we can communicate with, um, black, minority and women owned businesses um, with different communication channels that have been established already, so we can leverage those. Um, I think that we can also look at, there's a lot of funding available right now, a lot of fund, funding from the federal government and state prioritizes black women or, and minority owned business owners. So there's ways that we can also leverage that opportunity to draw interest, to meet the needs of our EDA priorities. Um, so I think it's, kind of shows up personally, I think, and professionally as well.
I guess the, the short or sweet of it is that my twenty-seven years and I worked with a very diverse group of people. And one thing that I learned early on is I was And one thing that I learned early on is I was transparent. I respect and I follow the law. I made no exceptions to that because once you start to make exceptions to it. Things start to happen. Because when you make that exception, one group says, well, you made exception over there, but if you follow what is down there to do that. We had individuals, they didn't think we were diverse enough, so they. Transferred. Employees in and they didn't fit. They lasted maybe three, four months in Rochester. I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you, I probably couldn't go down live in Tennessee and Arkansas. And live. I'm too high of a strong person, they're kind of laid back. They'll get to it when they get to it. So sometimes we, when we want to include people into something. I kind of leave my feelings out of it. I kind of look at at the perspective of what's going on is that. If people want to be part of the of the board or be part of things, they show up and then they're here. Versus uh, well, we need to call someone, we need to include these people, we need to do that. The people that want to get involved. Are the people that show up and want to get involved and make change to do things. So having said that is, is that I think that. It could be a very good community if you're transparent, you're open, you let the, you listen to what the people got to say. You can't always agree with them because there is leadership that steps up, but you treat everybody firm, fair and honest. You will never have any issues. In my, I've never had any issues that way. Some people can walk away and say, well, they wanted to be treated, you know, it's special circumstance. But I'm just telling you, once you open that door in a community, the Greek festival in Rochester. I'm not Greek and I've gone to it at times. They do a wonderful job in Rochester, they have the Greek fest. Other people have their. Their things that go on in Rochester. Doesn't mean that I participate, but I am glad that they have those. They can have their parades, they can have their things and the community accepts them, but we need to accept that in the community to be them allowed to do that and that. But it doesn't mean that I have to go do it. I blend. I I want to be a, I want to be an American and I blend to be the American. And I'm the American way in such way because sometimes people want to come here and stick with their culture. And move to the community and don't want to change our culture, but they want to keep their own. And that's where some conflict comes in at times. Because they don't want to do that, so that's my answer.
I see. The community as kind of likened it to the culture of any board, any. Company, um, any team that you're on. If we're starting from scratch and the plan is laid out, meaning the housing development is. You know, everything from low income housing to high end neighborhoods, whatever, you know, if if all of those are all taken into account. From what we're trying to pursue to attract people, then. It's the, you know, the opportunity is is transparent and it's it's. It's prevalent among all, eh all, all are welcome, coupled up with a community marketing plan. To to really attract that we are truly available for all. I also think stressing inside of that communication plan when we are developing our communities. Is public spaces to host events that are open to all. And and I'll just give an example, my, my sister um lives up on Madeline Island up in Lake Superior. Very small community, there's four hundred year round residents. And she is the, she owns a few businesses on the island, but she's the head librarian at the library. And it's a public facility. So she's done amazing things to be able to convince. The city that this is going to be an open discussion area where we want to have. People from all different ethnicities and backgrounds and age and kids and. And she's very intentional about. Programs to where she's bringing in people to have conversations or have fun or watch a movie or do crafts. She would completely redid the. Upstairs in the uh library to. Proactively reach out to people to not stay in their homes and get out and do more things. So I think as part of the marketing program. If you show things that are attractive to inclusiveness. That are community related. It attracts diversity and, you know, shows that we want that here in this town, so. You, you know, you, if you, again, if you take out all the technicalities of. Which businesses and, you know, all that, because that should be in in planning as far as zoning and and uh. Uh, the types of things that we're going to attract, the community is is really what would attract diversity. Because, you know, that that's what I feel like like people would be attracted to, not. A specific coffee shop or that we're bringing in a Walmart or, you know, things like that. It would be the community element of it.
Thank you, that was a hard question and so um. Good job, Jesse, for starting that off. And I apologize that it had to be you, but it had to be somebody. And um I officially want your sister's life, so.
I don't know.
Sign me up, it's a library on an island. That's it, that's all I needed to know.
Fairy doesn't float in the winter.
That's fine, there's books.
Excellent, um. It's a very um. It's an excellent topic to approach, I appreciate everybody's comments about that. Thank you. So going back to something was a little bit earlier, by your left. Allow me to ask another question. This is our future land use map that planning and zoning put together back in twenty twenty one. And we used uh Stan Tech as our city engineer, but they also have a planning service. And so they worked with the P and Z committee and put together our future land use map. Just for reference, the highway one hundred street. Purple is M one industrial commercial, B two is is highway commercial. Yeah, highway commercial, this is industrial, so. Our city limits follow pretty much this development or. It comes down through here, but then down here, so we have a lot of growth. That's why our treatment plant is at the very far end of our future land use map. Cause all our growth is to the south. High and island city limits are right up here, so all our growth will be to the south, so. Our current city limits and what we want to propose expansion. Is going to require annexation from our township. And we have an orderly annexation agreement now in place, it's been in place since twenty fifteen. So uh my question to the group would be. Should have marked it here.
Sixteen?
Sixteen, yes, okay, number sixteen. What are your thoughts on annexing Orinoco Township properties? For our girls, and we'll start with.
But it depends on what your plan says.
Sorry?
Depends on what your plan says, your annexation provisions. What does it say?
It has to be, there's different, you can petition or you you can request the landlord if they want to be annexed. Ultimately, there's eminent domain, but that's, we hope we never have to do that, of course.
Probably can't afford it.
I mean.
Probably can't afford it.
Yeah, that's probably true too, you know. Cause all those properties are owned by basically four people. Very large group. I agree with you, so. But there is a process and and we know that um in talking with the landlords. They are interested in developing, just a matter of if it's residential, commercial, whatever the case may be, so there, there is interest, there's awareness, but. I think it's important that we work with the landowners too. And as an E D A, that might be something that we, an E D A would consider doing is reaching out to the landowners and. Basically, do we want to? Be inclusive or do we want to expand? That would be my question to the group.
I don't have a view um in the abstract. It's all situation. Depends on where, who, what?
But that's very true, yes, that's right. Uh, Skyler, do you have any? Comments?
With your question the way it is, I guess I think not only in terms of. Those bordering properties that our township. We also have a handful of places where we surround township residences as an example. And so I guess kind of to Marcia's point. Are they wanting to be part of uh Orinoco as an example, if it's a homeowner, is if it's. The business and we can uh justify incorporating them into the city of Orinoco. Is it mutual, it's? It, it does feel a little bit uh premature, I guess, to. Come out point blank with an a direct opinion, I guess I I do feel. If it's mutually beneficial, then by all means, let's do it, but. Part of that is establishing those relationships with those property owners and making sure that. It meets their needs and it meets Orinoco's needs for growth, because we also don't want to be hamstrung. Where growth happens just outside our borders. Because we didn't build a relationship to work together and. I won't bring up a lot of history, but that's happened in surrounding borders to Orinoco in a few uh the last number of years. And so I think it'd be important to have those relationships to make sure it is. Smart growth and that it it is mutually beneficial for both the property owner and the city. Thank you.
I really don't have a whole lot to add. I would say I agree that the case by case scenario seems sensible. I I, in a general sense, I'm an advocate advocate for for growth, but. Wouldn't, I would need to much better understand the economics of our city and our budget and and things to really have.
I would agree with the conversation. I would also add, there's a lot of opportunity to learn from some of the other communities. Around Rochester um that have gone through this or other communities that have some like similarities to our situation. Um, to understand how they went through the process, learn from that. Um, try to understand if there's anything that can be applied to our situation as we navigate them.
Well, I think it's important that um it's all about economics. They bought the property around Orinoco just as they did Rochester. For future, and it's all an investment. What can they retrieve on their investment? With that, things happen in everyday life, they could walk outside the door and get run over by a truck. And then it's left to someone else to make those decisions. And sometimes when the family comes, in other words, someone could be in love with a piece of property and whoever would sell it. And something have that family, the family can't get rid of it fast enough to sell it. So I think it's good to have a good relationship with them, so if the opportunity comes up. Or an O K and the money is there and that opportunity arrives at that, that. Maybe as things go with Orinoco and this development plan and things start to progress. That you might be able to buy that property or move a little bit quicker on it before someone else buys it. And sits on it and raises the price even higher. Because it's slipped by Orinoco. To buy it or to make a deal with it. I really believe that as the people would see a good program going forward. If they were willing to want to be developed and bring that in because it's economically feasible for them to do that. When they see it growing that they can make it, once you start to go, build it and they will come, we start at a certain place and keep moving that way, people say. It'll work.
Yeah, I agree. I, one thing when I talked to um Mitch Mossman, he said that, I think they actually have this on their website, they promote. Properties. For private owners that aren't necessarily even for sale yet, so. Like you make a relationship with someone that has a lot of acreage and they basically list it as a potential for sale, you know, so. They can be part of the solution, you know, the city can be part of the solution to help move that along for somebody that's even considering it without necessarily. Um, going full out and and selling it, so. I think creating relationships, I mean, there's so much land available with every, each and every single landowner is. Extremely beneficial to the E D A to try to. Um, understand that and some of them may have good ideas, you never know. You know, they've always had this vision of this certain property and they know their property very well. And maybe it's a great idea and maybe they're the ones that want to seek out the investor or the developer to go do it. Well, great, you have somebody in your backyard that. Wants to, you know, raise their own capital and and get after it and just like that, you're developing your tax base. So I think. Having people a part of the solution versus waiting for the opportunity. Is one hundred percent the way to go. Obviously, it has to be teed up with people that. Things don't happen overnight and. It might not be tomorrow, but as things develop, if if we're, i- if the E D A is the one seeking out developers. You can have, you can have a lit, well, I've got this person that may be willing to talk, this person, you know, and. You can start connecting dots a lot faster.
Um, I think, I mean, I kind of a lot of repeat here, just the the community, going back to community and the relationship that we build, this is a a new group. And we have a lot of potential to uh hit the ground running with our intentions of. Emerging ourselves into the community and showing that from the get go, um that we're, our interest is their interest and vice versa. You know, not coming in like a, what is that saying, a bowl in a china shop, like not coming in and just knocking down walls and ripping this town apart, but. Really getting on an emotional level with people that probably have an emotional connection with. Their property or their land or a history with where they're at um and just letting them know that we, we understand that, we hear you, we see you. Um, but I think circling back to. You know, if it is a potential uh location or 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 land, um like what's your intention as a landowner? What's your intention, what's your connection? Asking those questions um and and maybe, you know, trying to combine that um effort or. Or merge with the person and and showing them, you know, the combined profit or what that, whatever that might look like, but. Um, and then I I kind of come back to the idea of um love and logic and you kind of touched on this too, but making it feel like it's their idea, not ours. And somehow, you know, in the, in the uh conversation. And in our efforts of reaching out to the community and making people feel like a part of this town and the decisions that are being made. You know, twisting it in on a way that it feels like. It's not our, it's not our idea, it's your idea and we're gonna be here to support you. Um, whether that's keeping a little bit of your land or giving us some of it or developing it um or. You know, planting the seed of what it could be, uh I think there's many different approaches to the idea. And I think it is case by case, um and and just every situation is gonna be different.
It could be as simple too as leaving a street a legacy, their name on the street. That said, this is the street and the family says that. Is our name on that street, I mean, as simple as that can sell a project, you know, we can put the name on the, at the beginning of this. Development, but your name, that's why he's gonna be a liberty name here.
Right, if it's a piece of land that's been in the family for years, then yeah, maybe it has street names, like, you know, type, might not be money or might not be, I. Need this twenty acres, it might just be as simple as something like that.
I had a question next, okay, this, you guys have been great on everything that you you've answered, I mean, throwing some. Crazy stuff at you, so thanks for everything you've done. Um, I guess mine's a pretty simple one here, um are you willing to participate in the organizational structure of the E D A? E D A. Okay, I mean, it's got a regular organizational structure, it's got treasurers, it's got secretaries and that. Just, that's a pretty simple one to answer, so.
Skyler? Yeah, go ahead.
Hey. Yes. Is that good?
Yeah, I I guess I'm next, I'm I'm also a yes, uh the word organization bothers me a little bit because it's not my strong suit, uh systems and organization and keeping. But I feel like there's other things that I could bring to the table that'd be helpful and 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 I do have time.
That'd be a yes as well, really interested is this forms and of what a lot of our strengths are. And backgrounds and how do we really plug in the right way? Not only from like personal experience and business, but how do we operate and how do our brains work so that we can really be positioned well to help each other and. Help the city and we'll be successful.
Yes. Yes, I I know, just in business and in my personal life, probably the best. Yes, I I know just in business and in my personal life, probably the best thing. I've done over my my life is identifying the weaknesses and the things that I'm not good at. So, uh, you know, anything relevant to uh find details and um. Uh, doing all the work, typing some things up and things like that. I think I even said it in the last meeting that we had regarding the E D A. Um, I'm just not good at. So if they're, if it were narrowing down to positions where it was. Um, you know, well, this is the only one left type of a thing. I would walk away because I know I would not be successful at that and no one would want me in a position like that.
Um, yes, I think um that's kind of the part, like the whole idea of this, uh, just being a part of the community and the roles that it's gonna bring and. Um, building a team and putting in place personalities and skill sets properly and. But really just being a part of the community and the decisions that are being made. I think that's the whole point of being on a board is just feeling involved and a part.
Yes.
That's good. To follow up, another quick yes, that or no. All my question is, if, you know, there's obviously more people that apply, which is amazing, then we have space where we have space for five. Um, extra, because Ryland and I already make up two people, so we just seven person board, we need five five people. Um, would you, if you're not chosen to serve on the E D A board, would you be willing to serve on one of the subcommittees we anticipate forming? Where are we? Who's next? Adam, I think.
Yes, Adam. Yep. Yes.
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 Yay, all right, cool. Thanks, everyone.
Um, so there's, we talked about the the structure. One of our questions, but I think you were able to uh fill it out on a sheet that uh Sunny gave to you about your. Different skills, accounting, financial, I think you all filled that out already, so we will. Project question, so. Let's kind of follow this one with Jeff and your comment too, but. Are you most comfortable in a lead role, a second in command, or a supporting role if you were selected to the E D A board? I'm sorry?
Jamie, I think.
Jamie. Start the question.
I would be comfortable in any of the different positions that you mentioned. I've played those different roles in past. Um, organizations that I've been a part of and. Led organizations, I've been kind of the second person and I've also been project managing or other types of. Work in these different types of things. So I would be really happy to be a part of any three of those roles or other roles that you're.
As I served on the Rochester Plains zoning appeal, worked for six years. I kind of turned heads one night when they wanted to vote same chair back in the third time when I voted the only one to vote no. And when they asked why, I said, because I think the rest of the group, it means to step up, we need to rotate this. Because you can only serve six years. Or three, start with a three and then you can do another that and someone leaves. So if the person that's always been in control leaves. Where's that leave your group? So I think it's important that you rotate through the positions to the best you can and and. And maybe not all of them, but you at least attempt to do things so that everybody. Gets that experience and and I believe it's a team effort that everybody helps each other out that. You just don't dump all the weight on one individual and and do all the heavy lifting. So yeah, I. I'm in, I'm in, start wherever and and I think it's important to work through the organization so that you can appreciate. The whole role of everything and really understand. It's kind of like starting in the mailroom and becoming the corporate president.
Not secretary.
I I think I've heard enough tonight that. You have great leaders already, so, you know, normally I would say. I would want to be considered to lead, um, because I think I am an effective leader, but. A lot of times that is because I don't know what I'm gonna be surrounded with and I know that hopefully I can bring leadership out of people. Um, and but from what I've seen, I'm comfortable in any role.
Subsecretary.
Subsecretary.
Um, I think I I would be comfortable in any role. I do think it's important to step up and say. If you're, you know, if there is an area like I'm looking at this sheet, I probably wouldn't be comfortable leading legal. Where you would probably be very comfortable, you know, I think it's important to acknowledge that. Um, I think in past. You know, I'm a yes person, but it's important to say no when it's outside of your realm, um, and and acknowledge that. Um, I wouldn't want to. Lead a team into darkness, um, because I'm overconfident in my yes. Um, but I'm very comfortable leading a team. And figuring out the steps in most cases. Um, but I also think um. That it's important to let other people lead because it's different perspective and like you said, with a great group of supporting people. You know, and and the jobs can get done, but maybe in a different, in a different way, um, and I think different perspective is. Super important in a group like this, just because it's it's, you know, good to switch it up and get a different take on. You know, different areas and different jobs and different projects.
Not secretary. I would prefer to be in a secondary capacity. To be able to offer input, but not be in charge of everyone. And my experience is that one of the most effective. Organizational structures is one where people are collaborative and build off of the skills and strengths that folks have. But in an E D A, the leader, um, it seems to me is. Extroverted, good at marketing, good at public speaking, good at. Personal relationships, um, and and I would say, given the the. The dynamics of this particular ground floor enterprise. Somebody who is gonna be involved in Orinoco for a long time. I think that's a good thing. I also agree with the rotation concept. Um, I think that's a, that's a good concept.
Okay. Skyler?
All right, um, so I'm very big into not being a person who likes titles, even though my job has titles. Uh, in my past, both in council and volunteering and other life, uh. I've been very much into busy work, uh, because my work, I have to have an attention to detail. I guess to Jeff's point, I would argue he might be one of the best people to be considered the president, and I'm sorry for saying that. It's only because I think somebody who sees limitations to offset that. I guess I see a lot of opposite potential, if that makes sense. I guess, like I said, I'm not into titles. Uh, I just want to be part of something amazing and I think that's what this group would be. I used to joke when I was on council, I was really good at number two and I still am. I I don't mind being a busy worker, be in the background. Uh, some of the volunteering I do, um, I kind of thrive off of people not seeing me, but stuff gets done. So I'm I'm good with whatever, but I'd highly contend, uh. Jeff or somebody else for sure to be considered for president or to reconsider how you phrase that, because. I think there's just so much potential with this group. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd say the same. I I'd be open to to any role. I I aside from secretary again, I know we're maybe kind of hard time filling that spot. Uh, but I I I do know that 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 type of thing is a weakness of mine, accounting, you know, even budgeting may not be great for me. But I but I I get excited about the the people piece. Uh, if you need somebody to go knock on the on the farmer's door and ask him if he's interested, that's me. Uh, I I like that kind of thing and and so I hope my strengths and and just looking forward to the collaboration again. I don't, I don't, I agree. Titles don't really matter to me, I but collaboration is how we're gonna move forward.
When Skyler was on our council, he was also the cookie person too.
You knew I would chime up, wouldn't you? Yeah, that that is, make it clear, that's not a requirement of this.
Yeah, we're missing, we're missing a cookie person right now, Jim.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you did, you own two different cookies.
Well, um, we're up on two hours here. Do you have any more questions that you'd like to ask?
I think we have taken enough, at least five people's time.
Thank you. Everybody's done a wonderful job and it's many questions that we've thrown at you.
And I think there are, there are applications.
Yep.
Yes.
The questions we didn't answer or ask.
Great group.
Just a couple of things. One is that um. This group would be working with the E D A representative and. With the CEDA representative, uh, similar to a Mitch type person, there's every city that has an E D A has a. CEDA representative or a CEDA contract with CEDA, so they would help us, guide us. Uh, Chris Geeson, the vice president of CEDA, has been involved with our. Three introductory meetings of sharing what an E D A is to the council, so and uh. So going forward, um, we will take all these very good and thoughtful. Responses to our questions and uh we will do some evaluation and uh. On our March twenty first council meeting is when we um with council recommendations and I would appoint. For the council's approval for those members on the committee. After that, um, Chris Geeson would meet with the E D A board on that first meeting or two, whatever how it goes. Or we would archive the structure and everything like that, so that's kind of some details there, but I do think it's important that. We do applaud for everybody coming forward and submitting an application. It is a. Key step to the growth for Orinoco and it's a very important step to grow. Um, we're doing a lot of work with the Planning and Zoning Commission here this past year now of getting more organized and so it does. Will complement what E D A is doing and working together whenever appropriate to, so. With that, um. Yes.
That may be, if I could ask, that may be a question to ask, is there a better night than another? Or. Or like a first meeting, I'm always trying to think ahead to in terms of of how we. How we would do this.
There was a question on the application about commitment of time and everything, so that kind of follows that, is there a? Time that would not, I don't want to say that would not work with your schedule, but. Uh, preference, if you had something that you'd like to share with the group.
And if you, and if you just wanted to, you don't want to say it out loud, if you want to put it on one of those. At the bottom of one of those worksheets, that's fine to just.
Let's do that. Let's let's take another approach.
Yeah.
Or or just days in general that are good for.
Probably days, I would think.
I'm not available in the day.
No, 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 what day of the week?
Oh, got it. We need your stats. We need your Saturdays, by the way.
Why don't we ask for uh your preference of one and two dates and also ask a preference for. Late afternoon or typically most of our meetings start at six thirty or seven. If something at five thirty would work for you as well, why don't you just put those preferences times down too?
Thank you.
Yeah, good, like you said, so. So with that, um, sure, it's some excellent points, but if there's something that you or questions didn't. Um, pose a response and you'd like to respond to anything at this time, you'd like just take a. Couple of minutes and share those thoughts. If you have thoughts, you've been very expressive in your opinions already, so if there's other comments you'd like to share with us. Start with Skyler and we'll work. Back towards Adam.
Well, I wanna, I've echoed it already, uh, but again, I want to thank all of uh mayor and council. Uh, everybody that's at this meeting, even those virtually. Um, I guess thanks for the opportunity to make it happen that way. Everybody in this room. I think has the right heart uh to do something amazing. I think we all believe, we all maybe have different versions of what smart growth might be for each of us, but. I think as a group, you know, collaborating, we definitely could go in the right direction. Um, I don't envy you as a council and as a mayor, uh, having to try and decide. Uh, between all these awesome candidates. I'm just humbled even being part of this group. There's just so much potential to grow with Orinoco. I just wanna, whatever we do, I wanna. Keep it unique, keep it the hidden gem uh that we have, uh, whether or not that includes me at this time, uh. I I just thank everyone tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary. Marcia? Keep you on your toes.
I would second the thank you and um express appreciation for what the council's doing. This is a good thing to do. And if I can be of help in whatever way, I'm glad to do so. Orinoco is a wonderful place to live and I'm honored to have been considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, I agree. I think everyone that showed up tonight is killer, like tons of uh skill set here. I think. Whatever the combination of people is, it's gonna be a very strong one. Um. I think it'd be, you know, great to be a part of, but again, I'm in the same level of I just want to be a part of the community. I will be a part of the community, whether you like it or not. Um, but to have a hand in the development would be great. Um, and but whatever, you know, direction is, um, we got a a great selection here, so thank you for your time as well.
Yeah, I echo the same thing. Thank you for putting this forward. I think Ryland, when we met maybe three years ago. You had talked about this being kind of a progression. Um, and we, you know, we kind of mentioned E D A back then, but it wasn't really. A thing because of the the barriers of the um sewer and whatnot and. To keep that going is very commendable. I mean, like I said in the beginning, this is such a blank slate and. Since I've been here, I've I've wanted to be a part of making it something bigger and. I mean, just even as simple as my employees not going to Casey's for lunch every day. Casey's is great, but maybe there should be more, is all I'm saying. You know, there it 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 it's it's a. It's a major step for this, for this city to to um develop and it's not gonna happen overnight. Um, but to lay the groundwork and be able to do it is is great and I don't, um. I sympathize with you to have to make a decision among, you know, all these great people because it's promising, you know, to. To have this many great contributors uh that are willing to step forward and do it. So, thank you.
I agree that uh you're very fortunate to have this many people show up and. Put their name in the hat to uh whoever, and it's a very diverse group with a lot of different ranging backgrounds from a lot of different things, so. Yeah, I think if it's done right. They won't say where the hell's Orinoco. And you could have the coffee shop and you could have things. If it's done right and everything else, and I think that um. The question in common, I think, but I think that when you look at a lot of things, I think that part of the group is gonna have to look at. part of the group is going to have to look at Orinoco's infrastructure as far as when it comes to your ambulance and fire services too, as we grow and you do things because those are very expensive, uh, the firing department, very expensive equipment as the buildings and as your EDA moves forward, different buildings, that's how you fight the fires, what what buildings come in here. You know, if um the senior uh citizens or assisted living, as I heard earlier tonight, that increases your ambulance, it's a volunteer ambulance service. And that puts quite a bit of strain on your volunteer ambulance service to be able bring that. And so you really got to make sure that this moves forward and the money and your infrastructure is in place before you invite that type in because if you invite them in and you don't have it, it could be disastrous to the planet. So, thank you again.
I thank each of you for inviting me to come tonight. It's been great. Um, uh, to get to share my thoughts and experiences with you. I have a similar kind of situation that I think I had reached out to Ryland about something and he's like, let's meet for coffee and we got a chance to talk and he's like, you know, down the road, there's going to be a great opportunity. And um, uh, so I appreciate that coming in. I don't even know how many years ago that was, probably when I first moved in.
Pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID. It's a really exciting time for our community and it's also um a very scary time because it means change and change is hard. Um, I believe that if we do it together, we can build a community that we're really proud of and continue to build on the history of our community. Um, and it can be collective. It's, it's, that's hard work to do though, to make sure that people's voices are a part of the discussion. Uh, it takes extra work. It takes people that are willing to do our, it takes willing people to have conversations that takes um the willingness to sit across from somebody that you do not agree with. Um, but come to that common center and saying, let's build something and agree on um these things and work together. And I think that's what's most important um in this work that we do. So whatever direction that you go with, I hope that um that is where we lead, is that we come together, together um to do that work and really um use that as a way to move forward. Um, so I think we'll have a community that we're all proud of and
I'm looking forward to being part of that. Of course, I would like to thank everybody here for your volunteer work. It's what you're doing already is awesome for our community. Um, I'm I'm happy and looking forward to the opportunity to give to our community, but also would feel no remorse if I wasn't chosen because of the people that are here. I have uh no confidence, no. Have no concern that 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 the team is going to do great and and so if I'm not, I'm I'm perfectly comfortable with with where it's going to go and and happy that we have these folks on here, so thank you guys. Thank you.
Okay.
With that, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. All in favor, say goodbye for saying, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Skylar's waiting.
Oh, yes.
Hi, Skylar.